Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Chairman McCoy.
Here.
Commissioner Osick.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
May I please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of additions and deletions to the agenda. Commissioner Lewis.
I don't see -- well, yes, move the -- move additions to the Housing Authority Agenda.
Second. Been moved by Commissioner Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Nanki to approve additions to the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Here for public comment. And we do have some public comment this evening. Marla Mize. That followed by Steve Anderson.
Where do I go?
Right up there.
Well, my dad was giving him a wave.
Wave, Kenny. There we go.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I just wanted to quickly say that...
First of all, ma'am, did you state your name and your address?
Area Ward.
Area Ward, yeah.
My name is Marla Mize. I live on D Street. I think it's Ward 6. I'm not positive. D Street up by Lancaster Mall.
That's 6.
Yep.
Okay. And I work for Easter Seals Oregon for the Homeless Veterans Reintegration Program. Our program is federally funded, but we work with the homeless and those veterans who are at risk of becoming homeless. And I just want -- the mayor came to the West Salem meeting on Monday and invited us to come and support him and this proposition or movement or whatever it's called to get Salem homeless off the streets and into some housing. And not having a house to live in is, of course, a terrible, terrible thing, and it's also a barrier to employment, which is what we hope to deal with every day. We try to get veterans' jobs, but there's such limited housing, we have to refer them over to Arches, and there's a five-month, six-month, seven-month waiting period. And it's hard to get a job when you don't have a home. So anything that the city is doing about this, we wholeheartedly support. And if Easter Seals Oregon's HVRP program is now located inside WorkSource, so we work alongside -- it's the best practice to be in the American Job Centers, and we find that very, very helpful to get our veterans employed, but we sure need to house a lot more of them.
Great.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Marla. Is there any questions? Thank you. If the audience could put your cellphones on vibrate, it would be much appreciated. Okay, Steve Anderson.
This one's not working. Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Good evening. My name is Steve Anderson, co-chair for the West Salem Neighborhood Association, and here speaking in behalf of the Neighborhood Association and myself. First, thank you to our mayor for attending the Service Integration Team for West Salem last Friday. And just a note, it'll be coming to Marion County shortly, so I encourage you to get involved in that effort. But specifically, we're here tonight, myself and Evan Sors, who couldn't be here, we spent a lot of time, our other co-chair, working on homeless issues in Polk County and West Salem, but we are here to ask that this body support the implementation of the Homeless Rental Assistance Program. We fully endorse this effort and see it as a benefit to helping to solve a problem and take a positive step forward. So on behalf of myself, Evan, and the Neighborhood Association, we ask this body to support its implementation.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
It's appreciated. Okay, we're to the consent calendar. Commissioner Lewis, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move acceptance of the consent calendar for the Housing Authority meeting.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Nanki to move approval of the consent calendar. Any discussion? Commissioner Lewis.
Yeah, I -- we seem to do this a little different every time, so here we go again. I always want to give the director an opportunity to speak, especially about the program, but as I just mentioned to him, I want him to spend a little bit of time tooting his horn. What the City of Salem is preparing to do for the issue of homelessness, I think is as good as you get. And we're fortunate -- we're fortunate to have a group of folks that know what they're doing and will do well. And so I just -- I wanted the director to have a few minutes to speak.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that very much. I'm going to go through the agenda really quickly and go through and answer some questions I think might be on the mind. Rental Assistance Demonstration, RAD. So that's a HUD program that they put in place in 2011 so they could recapitalize with funding from private market in order to basically repair a failing housing stock of some 70 years aged. What we did to a year ago, and we've waited a year for the CHAP, which is the Housing Assistance Payment Contract, so only like HUD. We've waited for a year. What we submitted last February of 2016 was a plan to alleviate all of our -- or to change all of our remaining 245 units of public housing. Now, the only thing that really changes is we get a 20-year contract, which gives us more predictability from the funding we get from HUD. So that's the biggest difference. People that are living in public housing now, they're going to living -- be living in the same units if they want. And so it doesn't really change a lot, but it changed for the clients, but it certainly changes quite a bit for SHA as we work to get renovation and funding for that. And really, for the Phase 1, which is 164 units, and then the rest of the units are Phase 2, we haven't even really begun to flesh out Phase 2 particularly, but Phase 1, we know that the six multifamily properties that we have in Salem, two north, two south, two west, that's 164 units, and we're going to, within 180 days, we have to have a financial approach that we can give to the commission and give it to HUD. And after that, we start moving fairly quickly. So within a nine-month to a 12-month period, we should be in a position to know what our financing is, have partners who will finance in the way that we want them to, and have our entitlements, if you will, at a macro level. So that's what that's really about, and I'm happy to take any questions on that. The action, though, is really just for us to get authority to sign off on the CHAP, which starts this whole process.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Director Welch, and I also echo what Counselor Lewis has said. I have a couple of questions about page 2 of your report, the first paragraph. If we're reducing some of the five-bedroom units to two and three, how are we creating six new units in the apartment complexes?
Well, so that's a function of the scattered site units. We're going to bring six scattered site units to the multi-phase.
And when you say "bring it," you mean bring it on paper?
On paper and the subsidy.
Okay, got it. So now I understand, because somehow I was reading that and I thought, well, that meant you were reducing the 100 -- the big place, you were reducing him down, but you were going to end up with six more. But I see it's just a paper transaction and also bringing in the subsidies, so you end up with more units.
Correct.
Okay. Then -- no, I had a second question, but you answered it already. How did you know I was going to answer that?
Just lucky.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Andy. So we'll move -- okay, we have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Nanki to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. We're to information reports. Want to go through those for us, Andy?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I believe there's two documents. One is a 10-page document that was the start of a plan that we put together that we've shared with the city manager and the mayor. I also have a smaller, abridged version that I think is probably the right level of information at this point in time. So I'm just going to basically read this off. So Salem is challenged with homelessness. An estimated 1,500 to 2,000 individuals are currently homeless in the Salem area, with approximately 500 of those falling into the most vulnerable and hardest-to-house category. Salem Housing Authority convened a group of community service providers, housing advocates, to explore collective resources, infrastructure, and capacity to serve and house chronically homeless individuals. This effort was requested by the mayor with the city manager's knowledge, identity actions that could be taken and address homelessness in the short term. Gaps in community resources and services were identified, and as a result, SHA developed a comprehensive transitional housing rental assistance supportive service program. Now, I'm going to stop there, because that's a lot of language, but there are a lot of people other than just SHA who are participating, and so I don't want for a second to have -- think that we're doing this alone. And actually, a lot of the other work, as we get going, if we get going, would be by other parties, so. This also would be the first coordinated entry program in Marion County. What that means is that all of the homeless individuals would go through HMIS, which is a HUD system for chronicling and tracking homeless people. And so that's never been done in this area. So that in itself is a really big outcome, just to know each of the social service providers can know at any time what that homeless person is doing, what -- who else they've seen, where they're living. It just helps to track them rather than getting the -- rather than losing them in The program would serve the most vulnerable and highest-risk 100 homeless individuals through the placement into appropriate transitional housing for up to one year with a self-sufficiency model case, which is really wraparound services that would be levied by multiple different social service agencies. Priority would be given, and this is the first time, I think, also, that we've used data and consistent data points to really know who's the hardest-to-house homeless person. So there's a tool that I'm not particularly -- don't know much about, but it is a VI SPADA. And it's a tool that basically measures the need of a client, and we're going to, in this idea, we're going to go from the -- and the higher the score, the more that client needs service. And we're really going to look at the highest score, and that's going to be the person that we are proposing to take first. So SHA -- the program would allow SHA to provide rental assistance payments, barrier removal funding, barrier removal funding being closing or clothing, furniture, where they can have some -- a nice place, have some furniture, driver's license, IDs, all those things that everybody in this room probably has and doesn't think about, but so there's -- yeah. And so the barrier removal funding and coupled with the case management to the most at-risk 100 homeless individuals, SHA would also work with community partners to ensure clients receive services and access to the in-kind resources available. We have several social entities who give resources to homeless and people at risk, and in this budget, they've dedicated up to $750,000 of in-kind resources that could be mental health, could be just healthcare in general, alcohol and drugs, A and D. And so it's a real comprehensive program. For example, barrier removal funds would pay for tangible items such as furnishing, bus passes, clothing, haircut, resume, preparation, hygiene items, and so forth. Community partners would provide supportive services such as mental health, medical addition, treatment, and other behavioral supports. While some of the 100 may have received or are receiving services through some community partners right now, we currently do not have the resources for the rental assistance and the barrier removal services for this vulnerable population. Moreover, many of the 100 will need SHA's assistance, are articulated in the program for permanent vouchers. The program requires coordination and administration. The program budget includes one of -- one SHA employee. SHA would staff and administer the barrier removal component, assist with finding housing options, and provide the intensive care necessary for the clients. Recognizing that there are far more chronically homeless individuals in the Salem area than we can serve, SHA would commit an additional 100 rental vouchers for the homeless population. So what we expect is that most of the clients on that list are not going to be able to go to permanent housing right away until they're seasoned and comfortable and kind of on their way. And that's what we've asked the city to fund the transitional housing, but if they are able to go to permanent housing right away, then SHA would have vouchers that we could do that for, for those clients. And so I don't know if you want me to talk about the budget at all, but I'll stop there for now.
Questions?
I have a question. It sounds certainly like a great program and a really comprehensive plan for services, certainly for the 500 hardest-to-house and the 100 out of those with most chronic needs. I do have a question, though. What is your insight into the resistance of those 100 who may qualify to participate but still be skeptical or resistant to participating in the program? Obviously, you'll go for the ones that want to go first, but what are you doing to make sure that you reach those who do not want to participate?
Well, that's interesting. A gentleman over here, who's we're working with, is the guru of the assessment tool, right, Jimmy? And he has, I don't know what numbers you're up to now, of testing -- he's out in the field, he's testing people on this VI SPADA drill, and so we know where they are. It's just whether they want to come and be someplace where, in an environment that they probably haven't been for a while and probably aren't comfortable. We would fully expect that people would come in and go out and come in and go out a little bit. So it's kind of iterative. It's not going to be, you know, a great -- it's not going to be a smooth going, but I think that we know where the people are, and we know with the resources we have how we can help them, and Jimmy's a big part of that as well.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. I have one comment related to Commissioner Cook's question. My guess is that those people who score highest on the black box thing...
SPADA.
SPADA, thank you. Would potentially also be those who might be most resistant to obtaining help and coming into the system. Am I wrong in that assumption?
I mean, that might be slightly generalizing. I don't know.
I do that all the time.
I think folks are not living like we're living for a lot of reasons, and I don't know that they necessarily would or would not. Do you have any ideas on that, Jimmy?
I would invite him to come up if you'd...
Yeah, please.
Come on up, Jimmy.
Please.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Jones. I am the Director of the Community Resource Program at Community Action, and starting last August, we began an assessment model using the VI SPADA, but also using another assessment tool called a VAT, to engage every single homeless client that we could find, and with the goal of getting 100% of them in Marion and Polk County, of which most of which, as you probably know, are here in Salem. And since that time, we have assessed more than 800 households, including a total of over, at this point, about 1,200 people, including children and family members and things of that nature. The situation here locally is that we have, as you probably already know, a crisis of homelessness in terms of, you know, total numbers, but it's not, you know, a crisis in terms of total numbers that far exceeds anything else in the country. What we do have locally is a crisis in terms of vulnerability. So the national average on the SPADA is about 7.3. Our numbers here locally are about 9.5. And the reason for that level of vulnerability locally is that on the SPADA, basically, you can get two extra points, an instrument that ranges from zero up to about 20, but you can get essentially two extra points if you are trimorbid. And by trimorbid, I mean somebody who has a chronic physical health condition, who has a mental health condition, and who also has a substance abuse condition. And for a variety of reasons here locally, we have a -- our median client is essentially trimorbid. They have those, all three of those criteria. So yes, they are very difficult people to engage sometimes, and we will take our tool out in the field, we'll go up along the creek beds and various parks and all sorts of places across both counties, and what you find is that sometimes those folks are very resistant to being engaged. But, you know, in my experience, I've worked with this sort of system in other places, up in Clark County, Washington, for example, where I was working in homeless services before, we did something very similar to this, what I consider a very bold and courageous plan on the part of the City of Salem, but we were only dealing with 30 initially, and then another 20 that we put in scattered sites. So it can be done, and it requires, you know, not just one attempt, hey, are you interested in housing? And then, well, no, so, you know, you go away. That's not really the way you have to approach it. You have to continue to go back and back and back again, and sometimes it's an education project, too.
Commissioner Cook.
Thank you. So, Mr. Jones, my question, especially when you're talking about the trimorbid, the mental health, substance abuse, and chronic health conditions as well, I'm encouraged by...
Andy?
Andy's -- I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I don't remember your title. Is it Director?
Director.
Director Andy's, Director Welch's. I'm encouraged by the great work that's happening, but if someone is suffering from part of that trifecta with mental health, with substance abuse, they go in for treatment, and then they relapse. They go in, and as commonly happens with this trifecta that you're talking about, the behavior change is slow. The implementation may be right away, but quite frequently, when you're setting those boundaries in place, you know, you have to stay sober if you're here, you have to have these guidelines to follow. It takes more than one try, and quite frequently, bridges are burned. It sounds like you have a plan in place to ensure that, Andy was saying, people come and go in the beginning, so you're not automatically funneling someone towards change they're not ready for. Could you talk a little bit about that?
So the supportive housing model, which is, you know, what we're moving toward with this particular plan, is one that ensures that clients have access to supportive services on not just a monthly basis, but a fairly frequent basis, that there are people there that are checking in with them constantly to be able to make sure that they're, when they're having these moments of crisis and relapse, that they will, you know, be directed back into services. For example, the project that we attempted up in Clark County, Washington, dealt with folks who had been homeless sometimes for five, 10, 15 years. And when you place people in housing that have been homeless that long, the adjustment period is considerable and challenging, I'll tell you that. For example, we had one client who was a veteran who had been homeless for 15 years, and so when we first moved him in to the housing that we were attaching to this project, the first day, he walked in and he dropped his bags down in the middle of the room, and he just stood there for about two to three hours looking around, because he hadn't been in his own place in so long, he could hardly remember how to engage with it. And then that night, instead of sleeping in his room, he took his sleeping bag and went back in front of the post office and slept in front of the post office that night, because, again, it required an adjustment period. But then after two to three months, you know, he started doing his own laundry and, you know, just those sorts of things that we all take for granted on a day-to-day basis. But, you know, it's not a light switch. Things don't click off and on, and sometimes people, you know, just in every other capacity of life, take steps backwards. And then, you know, the supportive housing model is really designed to make sure that there are supports in place to make sure that when those happen, we don't lose that person. And sometimes, you know, people blow out of even supportive housing here and there for various reasons. But, you know, a model which continues to try to engage them and to keep them from living under the bridge, like we see here in Salem, or up some of the creek beds and things of that nature, will, over the course of time, with the majority of people, not with every person, because, you know, if anyone tells you that they're going to have a 100% success rate, they're not telling you the truth. But with the majority of the people, sometimes the vast majority of the people, it will be successful.
Commissioner Cook.
Sorry, just one more question. So you had mentioned the supportive housing model, and my next question is, as far as outreach to neighborhoods, quite frequently, there's stress involving any reentry programs, and I know Salem Housing Authority has properties around town. What outreach are you doing involving neighbors or neighborhood associations so that they can become aware of ways that not only they can be supportive, but things to look out for?
Okay.
Because when you hear that something's coming into your neighborhood, or you're not quite sure about a program, you may not recognize.
Right. So what you're talking about requires an education project, essentially. And so one of the things that I've been doing personally is I've been going around to the neighborhood associations for the little bit for this reason, a little bit for a different reason, of late, and talking about the statistics that we've been generating from this over 1,000 now population that we've surveyed. So HUD recognizes nationally four categories of homelessness. People who are literally homeless, living in shelters, that's category one. Category two are folks who are imminently homeless, about to be out of their place within a couple of weeks. Category three are folks who are homeless under other federal statutes, like McKinney-Vento. So if you're lack of regular nighttime place of accommodation, you can be considered homeless there. And category four, which we have a considerable number of here in Salem in particular, are folks who are fleeing domestic violence. So we have generated, as part of our assessment process, in addition to the SPADA, we also do a base assessment, and between the two items, it gives us 100 pieces of information per client. So I can give you all kinds of statistical breakdowns on what the homeless situation looks like in Salem from that. I can tell you, for example, that the felony rate is probably about 38% in the last seven years in this particular population. I can tell you that the average income is a lot lower than everyone thinks it is. 51% have income, 49% do not have income. Of the 51% that do have income, that median income for that population is $8,800 a year. So that correlates with what? Social Security disability payments. And then, you know, you look at the fair market rents, and it would take 81% of that totaled essentially to be able to afford a one-bedroom apartment. And remember, that's only for half the population. So there's a lot of misinformation about the homeless situation out in the community, and both from a standpoint of assessment of figuring out what the situation is and trying to educate the public on what can be done, it requires a lot of, you know, sort of face-to-face, personal meetings with community leaders and especially in the neighborhood associations... and especially in the neighborhood associations and things of that nature, who have all been very receptive to getting this information and learning more about these projects. And I've yet to go to one of these things where someone stood up and told me, I don't want this stuff in my neighborhood. I, you know, generally, the attitude here in Salem has been very helpful. It's, you know, how can I help? What can I do? And those are the sorts of questions. And, you know, generally, I think if you talk about it, you know, there are many reasons to address a homeless situation. There are arguments across the spectrum, from humanitarian, all the way down to cost-effective. Now Eugene, for example, spends a lot of time talking about FUSE statistics, you know, what are FUSEs, that's frequent users of services, you know? And so a lot of our highest-scoring clients that Andy were talking about are people that who would generally go to Salem Hospital, oh my goodness, you know, 20 times a year. So what does an average hospital visit cost? What does, you know, a trip to the hospital in an ambulance cost? So, you know, I can talk about the economic implications of solving this problem, and I can talk about the humanitarian crisis, and usually, there's something in there that will address the concerns of everyone. So, you know, this is a hard problem for everybody, especially on a neighborhood level. But I think that there is, you know, really the first time in a long time, public consensus to do something. And this something is enormous, and it's bold, and I think that it stands an excellent opportunity to be successful.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you. I first want to make a comment, and I want to thank the mayor for pushing this, because it's such a vital thing. And, you know, too often, we just end up with, we could have all your great statistics, Mr. Jones, and then say, what a great report, and throw it up on the shelf, and that's the end of it. So I commend your work, and I commend Andy's work. I've got two questions, Andy. The first one is, the 100 extra vouchers, is that coming from vouchers that we already have?
It is.
And we're having trouble with those vouchers right now in terms of, they're not at the market rates, so some people who have vouchers still can't find housing. And are we working on that problem to the extent that we can here in little old Salem, as opposed to big H U D, which may become smaller and smaller as the next few years go on?
There's a couple, excuse me, there's a few different issues. For S H A, rents have gone up so quickly that HUD hasn't given us enough money so we could utilize all of our vouchers, right? But there's still opportunities out there.
Sure.
And there's a lot of landlords that really are, I think, probably easily committed to this adventure, right? And so talking to landlords, getting landlords to buy into this is going to be a critical, a critical element, number one. So, but I think they're out there. I think the landlords are out there.
My next question is more of a general one, and that is, what do you need from us? Will this, are we going to have some sort of increase in the budget? I'm also looking at the city manager. I see your, the tentative budget there. Will that come to the Budget Committee to discuss?
Certainly, that would be my expectation, absent direction otherwise.
Okay.
Not necessarily by this body, because this is the Housing Authority.
Sure, but I mean, it'll, yeah, come to the Budget Committee of the Councils. We start meeting in April. And then, in the more detailed report, you had a whole page of recommendations, recommendations for action. Do you need us to move on that, or you're just saying, here's our recommendations, and at the direction of the mayor, we're going to move forward on many of these as we can? I'm looking at page three.
Three?
Page three.
Those are the actions that we would take.
You're taking, okay, perfect.
Would take.
Okay, would take if you had the money.
Correct.
Okay, okay, okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Lewis?
I'm not sure if this is for Jimmy or Andy, but I'm taken back a little bit by one of the statistics. 41% of domestic violence is the cause for homelessness, and 43% of that are those that are fleeing a current abuser. So round numbers, about 20% of the clientele are fleeing a current abusive situation.
That's correct. It's actually maybe a little bit higher than that. So of every female head of household that presents to us, 75% of that population is fleeing, reports some episode of domestic violence at some point in time in their life. And of that population, about one out of every three are fleeing from their last situation.
Okay, my question is, do you support these people in finding what I'll call justice, or do you just leave that alone and work with them?
It is a complicated situation in the sense that, you know, our fundamental rule is to approach these clients from a standpoint of trauma-informed care. And we do not want to, by our interview process or having people apply for housing, impose a level of trauma upon them beyond what they've already suffered from. So we are very cautious in how we interact with this particular situation. We will encourage them at times when we think it's appropriate to seek legal remedy. We will provide them with resources and navigation where they ask us to do so. But our fundamental philosophy is to do no harm. And so from that perspective, you know, if someone presents to us and they absolutely do not want to pursue that any further, as long as there are not children involved and as long as no mandatory reporting situation is triggered, then we honor those wishes.
And I might say that the trauma comes from different aspects, and if you allow somebody to continue to think that it is part of life that they have to deal with, as opposed to getting justice for those type of crimes, putting that off is not an aid to those customers.
I agree. Okay, other questions? Commissioner Kaser?
Thank you. I just did a really rough calculation of the $1.4 million, and if you divide it by 100, it breaks out to about, you know, $14,300 per person per year, which isn't bad when you consider how much is spent sometimes on people who are habitually being arrested and housed and hospitalized, right, everything. My question is, through the report, I see there's lots of actions and things. What's the criteria for success? How are we going to measure this program, kind of over the long term? Because I get you can house 100 people, kind of in perpetuity. Eventually, you hope that they are able to move on, so just kind of curious about.
That's a great question, the metrics, right? So we have, S H A, over the years, have helped hundreds, thousands of people that are homeless. And on the domestic violence front as well, just to come back to that, when somebody comes in without any documentation, we go with them, and we make sure that they get a voucher right away, because that's what we need to do. And that allows them to move and to bifurcate the lease so they can be someplace safe and not at where they were. I think the metrics here are not necessarily only about somebody in permanent housing. I think it's about health and welfare, and there's a lot of different ways that our partners can gauge that. And, but we do need to track that, and we'll want to over time, and if our clients allow us to some degree. But I can probably come up with better metrics than that, and so that would be a part of this, for sure, for the city to know that you're, that the program is valid and that the program is doing what we need it to do for the community.
Commissioner Osick?
And so you mentioned the cycling and how people, you know, come and go sometimes. Is this approach such that they're able to come back each time to a housing situation right away, or is there some criteria that they have to meet to come to rejoin the program, essentially?
I'm not sure that Salem Housing has decided on what their criteria are going to be for what happens when somebody blows out and goes back. I can speak to the national model on that a little bit. The success ratio for Housing First nationally is about 83%, so I would like to see us to be able to hit that mark at the end of one year. But I also know from prior experience, and when you're dealing with, you know, this level of vulnerability, and this level of need, and this level of history of homelessness, there are going to be people who, for whatever reason, just disappear on you sometimes or blow out of a situation. So the model, then, is to take that as evidence of further need, to essentially say that, okay, we're not going to give up, we're just going to keep trying until it reaches a point that, for whatever reason, you cannot try any longer. So it's never going to be a situation that we can, you know, address that to a 100% success ratio over a long period of time. But I think if you adopt a pattern where you will continue to have some effort at it, then, you know, you'll get closer to that goal of making sure that everyone's able to take advantage of the resource over time.
Thank you. A couple of quick things, if I could. Historically, S H A with rental vouchers. If you're on a voucher and you come to the list, and then you get off that list, you go back down to the bottom. That's not what we're going to do here. If people are bouncing back and forth in this program, we're going to provide opportunities for them to come back. That'll take a couple changes to some of our, the Section 8 admin plan, for instance, as it relates to criminal activity, and the waiting periods for somebody who, if they are a criminal in a certain way, and they haven't met the length of time that they have to wait, the waiting time, right now, we wouldn't take them back. But for this program, we're going to come back and bring in something that's much more flexible, that's a pilot kind of activity that allows us to make sure that we're getting as many opportunities for people as they need within reason.
So to some extent, you're not having 100 slots, you're actually looking at 100 people and trying to house those people?
Well, and we think that there may be...
As opposed to just trying to fill people in?
I'm not going to, I'll forget I said this, I know, but I think we can do more than 100. But we're here for 100 today. But if things go right, and we get everything going in a good direction, I think there's opportunity beyond.
Sure.
Hey. I have a question on the budget, and I'm just curious, by the way, I also echo what we said about the mayor. I was lucky enough to come wandering in on a Friday to the office to check my mailbox, and Andy and his staff was meeting with the mayor, and the mayor said, come on in and listen to this presentation. And I could tell you, the passion and the expertise that I saw in that room for the people that helped Andy develop this was really, really impressive. I was proud to be part of that process, so. And certainly, having an expert like Jimmy here, who I also got to meet with, and his passion for what's going on and his knowledge of what needs to be done is really, really, we're fortunate to have him here. But back to the budget, we've got rental assistance payments for City of Salem, $752, and that's calculated at 100 people, times 12, times 627. Then down below at the Salem Housing Authority, we have another $752, calculated the same way. So is that mean the city's throwing in $752 for vouchers, and then we're going to take $752 of vouchers?
So...
For a million and a half and stuff?
So the difference is, the funding that we're asking for rental assistance is for those individuals that aren't ready for permanent housing. The...
And Andy, permanent housing means the vouchers.
I'm sorry. Yeah, the rental voucher, the HUD rental vouchers will be our way of getting individuals into permanent housing. And so we talked about the, some people may be able to go to permanent housing right away, others may be in transitional housing. We don't have any transitional housing money. We only have permanent voucher money, and we can't spend that on transitional vouchers. So that's why we need that gap in there, because a lot of people are going to be in transitional housing. And the only resource that we could think of for this to work was the city fund.
Okay, so I take that to mean that we have a million and a half dollars in funding in this budget, one way or the other, to put people in housing, whether it's Section 8 or general fund money?
I think that's true.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, and again, thank you, Jimmy, for being here. And Andy, thank you and your staff for drafting this plan. It's a great start, and I'm looking forward to it. Mayor, good for you to get us started down this road. We'll see where we can go. This is just the start, which is the sobering thing. We'll figure out if we can put this into our budget, but it's only 100 out of 800 identified, which I'm sure is going to be more. And so a lot of work ahead if this whole thing's going to work, and we effectively deal with the bigger problem. Okay, with that, we have no other business to be seen, so I close this meeting, the Housing Authority of City of Salem.
This was information. Did they get this up here?
This meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency for March 13th to order, and if the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Kaser?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Here.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member McCoy?
Here.
Board Member Osick?
Here.
Board Member Cook?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here. Okay, Counselor McCoy, approval of additions, deletions to the agenda?
I move approval of revisions to the U R A agenda.
Second?
Second by Osick. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and that is a revised meeting minutes, item 5A. There was a change that needed to be made from what was proposed initially, and that's a revision.
All righty. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any reports of boards and commissions, committees? No public comment, no. Is there anyone who wanted to address the Urban Renewal Agency? Okay. And Commissioner McCoy, the consent calendar.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with the following polls. Item 4.2A by Counselor Anderson, and item 4.3A by Counselor Kaser.
Okay.
Second?
Is there any discussion?
Just... He seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. Osick seconded that, I'm sorry. Did you want to discuss?
Well, I think we...
Pretty well covered it, haven't we?
I think that pretty much took care of the consent calendar.
All righty.
Except for the minute.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
We'll do the best we can to that.
Now, we will go to, passed by that, information reports. Nope?
It's an information report, yes. Just some purchases that were approved administratively for the month of January.
That's great, thank you. You all read it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we'll go to special orders of business. Commissioner Anderson, 4.2A.
Thank you. I move the staff report on item, sorry, I almost said exhibit, item 4.2A.
Second? Second by Nanki. Discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some questions for Ms. Rutherford. First one is on the first page. You're talking about the minor amendments to the infrastructure project costing less than 10%, which pencils out to $2,600,000, which is 10% of 26 million. So my question, is that number a fixed number, or is that flexible?
Is the 20...
26 million. I mean, the 10% is going to rise or fall on the 26 million. I'm asking about the 26 million.
The 26 million is set. That's our maximum indebtedness level for this urban renewal area.
Okay, so it's never going to get above that.
Right.
Then I have some questions on page two. I'm looking at facts and findings about planned updates, including adding a secondary water line, the last sentence now of that paragraph, to Hennington Cold Storage, and then I'm asking, is that going to be paid for out of this 10%?
The current plan for the water line is that that would be... The current plan for the water line is that that would be funded through our water fund.
Okay. You mean, the, the urban renewal district's water fund or the city's water fund?
Through the city's water fund.
Okay. So, and I guess my, I had anticipate that it might be paid through whatever we call the SDCs out there?
The DDF is what you heard.
DDF, okay. I'll get the acronyms down. So, in other words, we're going to spend money from the water fund that the city has on this project, as opposed to spending it on some other projects that might be available?
Yes, so our, the, the current situation that we're facing out in Mill Creek is that we have a Mill Creek Road project that needs to occur here in the near future to replace some street, street trees that have died since the original construction and to do some other repairs in that area that preceded the current Hennington development. We also have a fire access road that needs to be constructed as a part of the Hennington approval. And there is a water line that needs to be extended to serve future development where PAC Trust is going to be constructing. So, to time all of this, um-
You need some extra flexibility. You talked about-
We need some extra flexibility to fund and construct this now. These would typically be development requirements that, that DAS would be paying for. But because of the DAS cash flow situation, they're not going to have their funding available until the July, August timeframe, and we'd like to start the work now.
Well, it sounds then like you're saying, we may spend this money on this, the water line and everything else out of our water funds now, but at some point, that's going to be reimbursed when the development actually comes there and uses those waters, and then they will be paying DDFs.
The, the road piece would be constructed from urban renewal. The water piece would be constructed from the water fund. And both would be reimbursed by DAS.
Good, good. Then, I'm, I'm interested in the, now I'm at Attachment 2, which is starting on Section 5, the urban renewal projects, and you have two full pages of potential projects. Is there any cost attached to this? Each one of these? Do we know?
So for all the projects that are listed in this exhibit, there are cost estimates for these. We didn't bring these forward at this time because these are cost estimates that have been part of the Mill Creek, the IGA and in the urban renewal plan. Those are not changing.
Okay.
And they're part of our capital improvement plan.
I would presume that those are going to equal more than the $26 million of our indebtedness?
No, that's not the estimate.
Well, it's less than $26 million for all these projects?
Member Anderson, if I could just point a clarification. The, the projects that are listed on here are the current projects that are in the plan.
Okay.
Yes.
It's only the item on the next page that's in bold, number 11. That's the new project that's being added.
I guess I didn't read it carefully enough.
So, to, 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 so what you'll see, underlying in bold, number 11, under transportation, number four, under sewer-
No, yeah, I see them all now. And I guess that obviates the need for my other question, because one of the things was Mill Creek Reservoir, and I was going to say, "Didn't we already build a reservoir up there on top?" Okay, good.
Yes, so several of these are completed already.
They're all working.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I guess my larger overall question is, at some point, this urban renewal district is going to disband when we've used up all the money and we've got all these industries and everything else out there. So, how do we then continue to pay for the maintenance that we're going to need for all these infrastructures that we put in and paid with the DDFs? Does that go to the general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, those would be operating revenue, operating expenses.
So, in that situation, with respect to the general fund, we're going to be taking monies in the, in the, you know, the distant future. We'll be taking money out of the general fund to pay for these, as opposed to taking money out of the general fund to pay for something else. Because I don't, and, well, do you anticipate that the tax base that, of the increase from all those industries out there, in and of itself, is going to generate enough increased taxes to pay for the maintenance? We don't know that.
We don't know that. And, and I think it also then depends on how far down the road you're looking, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Which horizon.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 4.3A, Commissioner Case.
Thank you. I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by McCoy.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Ms. Rutherford just to talk about how the program exception criteria was developed. And my understanding is that we haven't had exception criteria before, which is one of the reasons why. This is before us tonight, but could you just talk about the, the process and maybe what, what went into looking at this through the Downtown Advisory Board? What kind of criteria they were considering?
So, as you look at the staff report and you see item number one, under mandatory requirements, there, there, what, six or so criteria that are listed there that reflect our current grant criteria. So, up, up until this moment, when an applicant would come forward with a grant request, they would only have to meet one of these criteria. And if their grant request was $300,000 or less, then that would be a grant that I could approve. If their request exceeded $300,000, then we could bring that forward to the agency board for approval. Depending on, on the request, we have had situations where the advisory boards have made a formal recommendation. It's not a requirement that they make a formal recommendation. Typically, the grant request may be shared with them and it, it's just an item of discussion as part of that process of bringing it forward to the agency board. Following a couple of larger grant exceptions that were approved this fall, we looked at that process of not having any criteria for awarding these larger amounts. And so, this was discussed by the advisory board that looked at our existing criteria and whether or not it would be helpful to the agency board in making these decisions to have some additional guidelines to consider, and for staff as well, in terms of bringing forward these exceptions. So, through a series of a couple of different meetings, we had a little working group from the advisory board that looked at our existing criteria and other criteria that would warrant these larger grant amounts, or at least consideration of these larger grant amounts, that included the leverage of the public and private funding ratios. And the payback period, so if you have a, a large new investment, new development, you know, the timeline that it will take for the tax revenue realized from that investment to pay back that grant amount. Other criteria that was considered is the degree that the site or area is blighted, and so the problem that is being solved by making this grant award in that investment. And then, housing was another factor that has come up a lot, as the DAB has talked about, different projects, not just for grants, but for our own possible acquisitions or expenditures of funding. So that's been a high priority for the advisory board. So, these were all rolled together into a series of recommended, recommended criteria for your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner McCoy?
Thank you. Couple things. So, Kristin, the four to one leverage is a minimum?
Yes.
Thank you. And grant payback of seven to 10 years, is that a norm? Is that, in other words, I don't know if that's good, bad, or average, or mediocre, or what?
So, to just give you a comparison, as we were looking at the Parkfront LLC grant award of $750,000 for the office building, we estimate that that repayment will be five to six years.
Okay. And it's one of those three criteria under three, right?
The, yes, it is. It's one of, one of three, so it would need to meet one of those.
Good. I would, I just, I would hope that that grant payback analysis was pretty much every time we give one, not, you know, not, okay, well, it's, we're something else and we're not going to look at it. I would think that should be one of the criteria, personally.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner McCoy, does it sound like you might want to make number three, project must meet the grant payback analysis and one of the other two?
Yes.
Okay, so at some point, will you be moving to amend that, I presume? I'm a little confused, Director Rutherford. Did you, if you are making up to the $300,000, which is in your authority and is terrific and we don't need to see, nor do we want to see, but when you're looking at that, do you have a list of criteria that you use and were these the criteria?
What you see under category one, that's the criteria, the base criteria.
All right. So, it's just that the exceptions had no criteria?
Yes.
And am I to understand that in the category one before was the only need to meet one of these, you know, six or eight criteria, and now they need to meet two?
For an exception, not for the base grant.
Yes, for an exception. For you, they only need to meet one, but for the exception, they need to be?
Two under category.
Got it, got it. And then, were there any other potential criteria that were considered, then rejected?
So, I'm going to ask Cherie Worgren, our Downtown Revitalization Manager, to speak to that, because she sat in on these working groups.
Great, thanks.
Cherie Worgren, Downtown Revitalization Manager?
No, they didn't really talk, these were the key criteria. What we did, though, is we took a lot of examples. Whenever you put sideboards on a program, you always wonder what might you be missing or what might fall through, what might not, what might you want to do, but now you can't do it because you have it too, like hole is too small or, you know. So, we went through every site in downtown that we thought might be coming in for an exception. And then we looked at those that possibly wouldn't meet the funding threshold for the exception criteria. And based on all of that, and that took quite a while, we really felt that these criteria would assist in large projects, what, the catalytic type projects, the transformational projects, would easily be able to meet this exception criteria. I am going to give you, though, notice that I will be coming back with just some regular changes to the up to $300,000 program, because during that conversation, we talked about some other requests that I had come in recently, and they weren't going to be large, but they didn't fit in our regular categories that they really wanted us to broaden so that they could. And I'm going to give you an example. Cristos would like to do windows and possibly some outside seating. And right now, if you look at our objectives, they don't meet any of those objectives. So, at the next DAB meeting, we're going to talk about beautification to all facades, because right now, it's limited to a historic building in order to access those funds. So that was part of the conversation, too.
And will those then be in, if you do come with some new recommendations for us to approve for the director to use in, in under $300,000, will those new recommendations automatically also go in the, in the over $300,000?
I, I would say yes, because basically, it's one of our capital improvement grant program objectives, so it would be another one that would be added.
The only qualification I would give there, though, is to hit the threshold of an exception. It's very, very hard to invest enough money in an existing building to get above that $300,000.
But then again, if that's added to number one, it's going to be one more and you still only have to make two of them.
Mm-hmm.
And then finally, it sounds should be like what you kind of did, is look at the existing projects and then kind of work back from them and said, "These are the sort of criteria that we ended up with in, in the existing projects."
Well, if, if you looked at all the grants that we've done to date, the average grant size is $87,000. So, you know, it's well within the $300,000 range. We only had, in this last year, one that was at the $300,000 mark, because you typically have to do about a million seven, million six to hit the 300,000. So, again, most of the project requests that we get are, are smaller. It's just those exceptions that we're really, you know, looking at, your guidance on that, and we think that they need to be transformational or catalytic, do something significant for the downtown. And we know that we have some sites, we're hoping, that will come in and utilize our funding just so that we can meet those goals.
Commissioner Lewis?
Several questions. First, I just want to make sure, on the, on the deals that are 300,000 or less, there, there is still the requirement of the four to one leverage?
No, it's, those only have to meet category one and meet one of those criteria under one.
Looking at the, the sheet that was handed out at the February 13th Urban Renewal Meeting, it appears that there were two on the list that are over 300,000. Looking at the, the criteria, the way it's here in the report, would that affect either of those projects?
This would not have affected the Parkfront LLC or the apartments on Court Street. Each of those would meet the criteria here.
Okay. Next question. The, the idea of under three, having it meet the grant payback timeframe and one of the other two, if that were put in place, how would it affect either one of those projects that were over 300,000?
These would still meet the criteria.
And, and just so I can understand, the, under three, the second bullet project is characterized as blight due to obsolescence, so on and so forth. If it's in the urban renewal area, isn't that a given statement?
Not necessarily, because when you make a blight finding to establish an urban renewal area, that does not mean that every property that is within the urban renewal area is itself blighted. It's a, it's a broader categoris, I'm blanking out of my word. It's categorized more broadly than that. There we go, we'll go that way, so I don't stumble over it.
Last question. I see that this was, this criteria was put together by a subcommittee of the Downtown Advisory Board and it went to the full board. Was there any type of outreach done? And, and specifically, I'm looking to people who are in the development, construction industry, and maybe in particular, some of the folks that are on this list that have done projects with the city that could speak well towards what worked and what didn't.
No, that did not occur.
Commissioner McCoy?
I'm going to go back to my dealer on the payback analysis. So to make sure I understand, on those capital improvement grants that you can grant, so under 300,000, you don't have a payback criteria?
No, we do not.
And the theory on that being?
So, when you are dealing with the smaller types of grants that, that might be for some interior improvements that are $20,000, that, that's not going to increase the assessed value of the property significantly. And the payback could be much longer than seven years or something like that. So, we look at those smaller grants differently than the larger ones. But I would like to comment about whether or not that should be required for the larger grants as well. Just as we were talking here, there's one scenario that occurred to me where this could be an obstacle, and that is if you have, if we're doing some sort of tax abatement program for multi, for housing, multifamily housing within an urban renewal area, we won't be seeing that payback within seven to 10 years. Now, once the, we could start that clock once the abatement period ends, but, but that could be, get- could be, get kind of tricky to monitor. I'm thinking of some developments that we have within the urban renewal area right now that are benefiting from that tax abatement program.
So that's why it's the way it is, because you've got affordable housing on the bottom there?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to propose a substitute motion, and that is that we put off the decision until after outreach has been done on the subject.
It's a postponement to do outreach.
Second for discussion?
Second by McCoy. Counselor Lewis.
I take this extremely seriously. The, the goal of urban renewal areas is to generate additional tax dollars, the more the better. That's why they're all in existence, other than to deal with blight. The idea that we are setting up criteria that could, maybe, or maybe not, affect what we see happen in these areas, I think needs to be run by people who are in the business of developing, who would be doing this. And more importantly, we've got a sizable list of people who have done it. They, they will have information that I think could be important, and thus my motion.
Could I speak to that for a moment?
Yes.
I'd just like to speak up to the makeup of the Downtown Advisory Board and that it does include lenders, it does include developers, brokers. So we can certainly do a broader outreach and check in with others, but through this process, we did have input from folks that are on the advisory board that do have that investment in financing.
Is this on a critical timeline of some sort?
It is not on a critical timeline.
Okay.
And we can certainly go back and speak with some of our past recipients and other potential investors.
Well, it would give those who want to a chance to, to do their own, look at this and, and determine if they're, I'm a little concerned about whether or not we're limiting our options. I'd like to think about Commissioner McCoy's suggestion, too. I'd like to understand it better. I, I just wondered if this could come up in a few weeks again and just give us a little time to think this through. It strikes me it's quite important.
Yeah, we can absolutely bring it back in a month to six weeks.
Counselor McCoy.
I would agree with that, and I apologize for not getting you with the question. It was one of those ones I looked at and went, well, why wouldn't we do that all the time? That's what we're here to do, is get the best return on our investment on what we're doing with those funds. And then it's, it interests me that we don't have that same payback philosophy on the smaller ones, though I sort of understand your explanation. So I'd sort of like to mull this over and maybe have a little more discussion with you and understand it a little better, if that's with the rest of the council.
Any, any further discussion? I'm going to move, then, that we postpone this to a date certain.
Where's the motion on the floor?
I'll substitute. Well, you want to vote on yours first? Why don't we vote on Lewis's first?
It's the same.
It's the same.
I'm sorry.
It's the postponed.
Yeah, to a date certain.
Oh, I see.
I would leave it up to the staff.
April 24th, okay with you?
Sure.
Okay. Counselor Lewis's motion, then, is to postpone this till April 24th, giving you all time to take a closer review of this and to check in a little further with the Urban Renewal Director, make sure we understand what we've got going on here. We haven't got any coming up, do we?
We do not.
Okay, so there's no time, this won't affect any projects. Commissioner Kaser?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to make the comment that, to what Director Rutherford was saying, is that the Downtown Advisory Board is already made up of those people.
Sure.
And I don't particularly like second-guessing our city advisory commissions when they've gone through that process already of having a subcommittee and inviting public comment and doing all of that. I'm, I'm all about outreach, but I want to make sure we actually have a goal here for postponing it, not just to get more input. But what's, what's the goal?
To understand it, I think, a little clearer. I think that was part of the discussion.
For who, who to understand?
For us to understand.
Because I understand this perfectly. We didn't have criteria before, and now we do.
I will check with you, so I understand it as well.
Which is great.
So will McCoy, so will Lewis.
Yeah, I guess it's all blight issues.
Yeah, it's us old guys have a little trouble.
So I just wanted to speak about the return on investment with urban renewal and also other goals that urban renewal has. When we did the staff orientation, you spoke about improving areas for residents, not just on return on investment, as there are a large amount of investment dollars that come through urban renewal, but not everything you do is based on the money return, it's on where people live and creating more, greater livability or enhanced livability. Can you speak to that at all, Director Rutherford?
Absolutely, and I will speak to one of our other urban renewal areas, in particular North Gateway Urban Renewal Area, where we recommended and the agency approved a grant exception to invest $749,000 in an affordable housing project. In that sort of scenario, you're not going to see this type of, of tax increment return on investment. You will see more intangible types of return on investment by providing that additional housing stock, but it won't be the same type of cash inflow to the urban renewal area as you would in, in the types of exceptions that were approved this fall in the downtown area. Thank you.
One other thing, I think, Director Rutherford, would be, it would be helpful, I think, if, if this passes, to have the Chair of the Downtown Advisory Board maybe come to the meeting and, and talk a little about the analysis they went through, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Commissioner Lewis.
Yeah, I want to point to the motion. I truly appreciate the expertise on the Downtown Advisory Board, having served on that board for several years with some of the people that are still on it. There, there is expertise there. The one thing that I think is missing the most is that we're creating criteria for a program that those on this list have gone through. And to, and I don't know if any of those people are represented on the DAB. And so the idea of going out and reaching out to a limited number of people, but to get their feedback on a program that they have used, both at the $300,000 and below and the above $300,000. And so I, I think it is a good idea to seek out that experience level.
If I could ask for a staff clarification, then, on the marching orders, to seek out that additional input, this would only impact those that received exceptions, so that would just be the two projects that are on this list. We can certainly speak with those that receive the smaller grant awards that would not be impacted by this, but I just want to get clarification on if we should only be contacting those that would be investing at a level where they, they would be impacted by this new set of criteria or those that would receive smaller grant awards that would be unchanged.
Do we still need more?
Sure.
Sure, both, okay.
Why not?
Thank you.
I guess if I could just add on, if we're going to go back out for this for public comment, we need to reach out more to than just the two applicants. That seems silly, frankly. If we're going to go back out, then we need to go back out and, and open it up, so. And that's what I would propose, then, if this, we're going to do it, we need to do it right, not just leaning on the people who, that...
I think we can each decide who we want to talk to about this.
Should that outreach come from us, then, or the advisory board who made the recommendation? Because they're public meetings.
Well, my understanding of, of the, of the motion is we're going to take a month to go back and, and seek additional review of, of these criteria for the agency board's consideration at your April meeting.
You opened it. You pulled it. Do you have any more thoughts?
Just quickly, that, this is a program that hasn't had...
Sometimes better leave them alone, you know.
Yeah, no, this is a program that hasn't had the exception criteria before, and now it does, and now we want to really scrutinize it.
It's new.
Well, I get that. It's, sure, it's new. I'm concerned, though, about the, the tenor of this, how this is going. You want to make sure it's, it's okay with the right people, and it's, it's got to be more than just that. So if we're, we're going to do it right, then we need to do it right.
I didn't hear it that way.
But, but at this point, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in support of the substitute motion.
Okay.
Well, I'm not, I'm not interested in whoever the right people might be, I'm just interested in something that we've operated without for years, that's come for us, got some thought, we've operated for years without it, let's make it right if we're going to change something moving forward, and I want to be comfortable if I'm going to vote, otherwise I'm going to vote no on it, so.
Well, if I may, I think what, what staff is hearing is that some agency board members want additional time to talk with, with staff and perhaps others, and then there was also the more specific direction to seek out additional input, and I, I would expect that Director Rutherford would, would go back to, and staff would go back to some of the focus groups that we used for the downtown, in addition to those who have gone through the process, both at the large amounts and small amounts, and try to bring to you a, a sampling of, of people who have, of an interest in, in urban renewal, both in the downtown and the other, the other areas.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nays, raise your hand. Okay, motion passes. Let's go on ahead then. We have no public hearings. Housing authorities adjourn.
Or Urban Renewal Agency.
Urban Renewal Agency, whatever this is. I was looking at my housing authority agenda, sorry. The City Council for March 13th to order, then. We've done all the opening exercises. Commissioner McCoy, additions or deletions? Roll call, I'm sorry.
Counselor Kaser?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Counselor Osick?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay. Counselor McCoy, additions or deletions?
I move the approval of the additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second. Second by Nanki. Any discussion?
Yes, we've got a correction in the February 27th council meetings, a person that testified's name, and we've also got a table comparing the current, city's current regulations for taxes and TNCs with the draft amendments being added to the staff report.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Council manager comments. Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I want to give a tremendous shout-out to the West Salem High School Boys Basketball Program. If you were paying attention this last weekend, they placed fourth in the state. They have, they have gone to state once before in, in their history and lost every game. They went to state this year, and by state, I mean the final eight participants, and they lost their first game again this year. It would be easy, would have been easy for them to just cash it in, but they didn't. They spent a lot of time talking about representing their city and came back and, and won the first game they've ever won in a state playoff, and as they were talking after that game, now we have a choice of, of playing for a little trophy or a big trophy. And they, and they came back and won their, their second consolation game and placed fourth in the state, which means they get a bigger trophy. But more importantly, it was, it was gratifying to see the, the growth in these boys. And so my congratulations go out to Coach Myers and his coaching staff, which includes my son. And thus, it's a good deal for Dad.
Excellent, excellent.
Congratulations to your son and the boys on the team. Counselor McCoy.
Well, this isn't my ward, but as long as we're at it, then we better congratulate the South Salem girls who came in third in the state with, led by probably the, if not the, one of the best women's, young women's basketball players in the nation, Vina Westbrook, completes a run in her career, fourth, first, first, and third at state. So in four years, South Salem's lost two games in the state tournament. It's quite a record.
Counselor Anderson.
That is my ward, and you somewhat stole my thunder, but that's fine because I have another issue that I wanted to speak about just a little bit. Some of you may have noticed that the South End of Bushes Pasture Park, kind of up where LaFell meets High Street, for a long time, there was a tree that had fallen down and it was trimmed back with all the limbs, and some folks who are interested in, in parks in general, on that park in particular, asked the former Parks Director Keith Keever if that tree could be left after the, the outer limbs were trimmed, a sort of a plaything for people to climb on, and I will have to tell you, and I live right by the park, as I ride through all the time, there are a lot of people there. And I was riding through today, and there was a work crew there taking everything down. So I sent an email to Director Fernandez with, you know, all caps on, read this now, please, and he gave me a good reply, and I'm sorry, he's not here tonight, so I'll just paraphrase for people who are listening, for people who see. What happened was, yes, the tree was there, and yes, it was great, and yes, kids were playing on it, but there were some safety concerns, and in order to, to really make sure everyone was protected, they would have had to do a whole lot, I think, probably do something with the ground around it to make sure nobody would fall, do some other things, and by the time they looked at all that, they figured it was probably better. And the Parks Department, in their expertise, made that decision. So I just want people to know that it was a great idea, but it, and it looked like people were using, but in, in practical realities of it, as you can see, all sorts of parks, playground equipment is changing from the jungle gyms on concrete that some of us grew up with to something that is more safe for everybody. So I'm sorry to see that tree go, but I understand the reasons why it did.
You want a moment of silence, or?
I already did that, I was riding by.
Good, good. Anyone else?
Just to comment on the family-friendly bikeway open house and Safe Routes to School Town Hall that happened this last week, with thanks to Bike Boulevard's Angela Oberby and Gary Oberby, thanks to Leigh Anne Ferguson from the Bicycle, well, former Bicycle Transportation Alliance, but current Street Trust, and to all the partners that we had on the table, including City of Salem. It was really nice to see staff there getting feedback about the bikeway going through town, and having over 200 people in attendance was something really to be proud of.
Great. That's a real success for this council as well. I wanted to mention, I was the honorary host at this year's 20th anniversary of the multicultural ball, which is the largest one they've had. This is the primary, one of the primary funding mechanisms for the World Beat Festival, which will be this summer in late June, I, 24th and 25th, if I recall correctly, but I'll mention it again when I get the dates absolutely set in my mind. It was a really lovely evening, delicious food, and all of the various communities that make up Salem, as, as the former mayor would say, the international city that we are. It was really a delightful evening. But they ran out of chairs. They got full, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick one, and it's like 24 hours away, but anyone who's in Ward Six, you have an election tomorrow, please vote.
Yes.
But don't mail in the ballot.
Yeah, do not.
Don't mail in the ballot.
Yeah.
There you go, that millions of people watching.
Okay, we'll move, were there any others? Okay, we have no proclamations, we'll move on to public comment.
Although we both have a full contingent because Jim started our next meeting.
Okay, Lee Lynch.
My name is Lee Lynch, 3043 Hamill Street, 5th Ward. And I want to thank the council for allowing us to engage in a dialogue on this important issue with Uber. I mean, Uber's in the news. It's really raised the industry standards in the taxi cab company or ride-sharing company. However, however, I remember at the last council meeting that we attended, their Councilman Anderson brought up a point about the city and the taxi cab companies engaging in a dialogue before anything would be brought to the council. And, you know, that really made me feel good because even though we're a taxi cab company, we work closely with the city. I'm constantly calling the city down here. We're constantly engaged with the city departments, the police department, building permits. We're not just a taxi cab company, we're a partner. We're a partner with the city, and we want our city to feel safe, especially with, you know, businesses coming into town. So I had a couple of concerns regarding the provisions, and probably this could have all been avoided and time could have been saved if we would have had a little bit of feedback prior to this being presented. But one of the things that I did notice is that the city talks about equality with the business of Uber and the taxi cab companies. And so I was looking at that very carefully, and I noticed something about the background checks. And I thought this was a little strange because according to this, and I read this carefully, I had to read it several times, "Prior to permitting a person to operate as a driver and annually thereafter, the taxi company or TNC shall conduct or have a qualified third-party conduct a criminal background check." Now, that just seems to me very strange. I mean, if we've been doing this so much in the city that I cannot imagine that a business conducting its own background check and then coming to the city saying, "It's okay, give us the permit." So it's little things like that. And I could mention a few other things, but my time is running out. But the point really is a little bit more dialogue, and because we're your partner, that's who we are as a business.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, just one, I want to make sure, because it's my understanding that where the city is moving is it required its, its own police department to do the background checks. Now they, we are saying to have a, and I'll use the word appropriate company, not the company itself, do the background check. If, so if the background check was across the board for all providers, that you got a background check from a background-check company, that's what their business is, would that, would that make you feel any less hesitant on that particular?
No, you know what would make me feel less hesitant? If everybody went through the same company with the background check. Because I really trust our police department. They've been doing this for a lot of years, and we engage in that dialogue. So if you're going to operate in the city, and you're going to get permission from the city because it's a part of the public transportation system, and the city is going to give permission, I really think the city should be managing that a little bit better rather than relying upon somebody else to do it. I mean, my goodness gracious, you know, as a city, you know, as a city and as council people, we have kind of a right to look after our citizens. And I think the wonderful way to do that was to have it truly be equal on a background check through the city.
Counselor McCoyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Lee, one of the things that I also recall in our discussion, whenever it was, a month or two ago, was you wanted an equal playing field with the TNCs.
Right.
Right? That's, in my mind, what we're doing here. Is that we're deregulating to a degree.
Yeah.
The cab companies, a large degree, and put you on a level field with the people you're competing with. I'm not sure what else the business can, would ask of us but to give you an equal shot, because before, we were regulating the heck out of you, and they were off doing their deal. You're now, and this puts you on the same, absolutely same level field. You're competing on an equal basis in terms of how you're regulated with the people that have, the TNCs. And so I'm a little confused on what it is you want when you ask for 11 playing field, and we're giving you one.
Well, I, we were talking about equality here. And it just that, you know, as, it's not so much that, it's that you talk about the dialogue that I thought was going to happen, but it didn't.
Well, in this process, this is the time for dialogue.
Well, that's what I thought. So I was confused because I thought that was going to take place prior to this.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming down, Mr. Lynch. I guess another way we could look at this is when we're talking about equality, the proposal is lowering your standards to be the standards of, of the TNCs. And perhaps you might wish that the standards of the TNCs were raised to your standard.
Well, I would rather everybody's standards being raised.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I would like to see. And I think that would be fair. I just don't want to lower, I don't think the standards should be lowered for, for the city. I really don't. I especially don't think the standards should be lowered for, I do not think standards should be lowered so that somebody else can come in and participate in those lower standards.
Okay.
I, I, I feel uncomfortable with that.
Well, that's good. Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Frye.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and City Council members. My name is Rich Frye. I reside in Ward Four. I am the President of the Salem Planning Commission, and I'm here tonight to kind of address our report for the year. You, you guys all got a copy of this, so I'm not going to bore you with all the details. I'm just going to kind of hit the highlights. We have three new commissioners this year, which has been kind of invigorating for our, our commission. We had three people that had been there quite some time leave, and so we've got some new blood there. We have nine members now. We have started an education committee, which is basically a community outreach. We're trying to reach younger people. We're also trying to help the community better understand how to communicate in a public hearing. So those are some things that we're bringing forward. We have been doing a lot with the new Unified Development Code, which I was a part of the rewrite. And I have to say that, I think that the new UDC is working very well. It's, it's clear enough, it's precise enough, but yet it gives us a little flexibility, which really makes things work well. We've gone through the marijuana zoning, which has taken a lot of our time this year. We think that's been rather successful so far. You guys probably have a little more with that than we do. We have a lot of our members that are on different committees. We've worked on the State Street, we've worked on the Bike Pad, the UDC, or the ADUs. And so we have a lot of, of our members that are doing that. We're dealing with the housing needs analysis and the employment in the multifamily. We've seen a big increase in multifamily projects that have come in front of the, of the planning commission. ADUs is a big deal right now, trying to get that. One of the things that I will say, that in my opinion, we've heard back and forth on that, our, our focus group and a lot of the public really wanted to make it very flexible. It sounds like the neighborhood associations want to make it a little bit more restrictive. Unfortunately, if we make it real restrictive, I don't think we're going to get anything out of it, especially at the cost of the ADUs. A lot of people are confusing ADUs with tiny houses. They see it on TV, and they think little houses on wheels are going to get rolled in everybody's backyard, and that's where people are going to live. Tiny houses are not part of the ADU. We just went through last Tuesday night, the Airbnb, and there was quite a bit of conversation about that. And again, the neighborhood associations are not in favor of kind of opening it up. They want to keep it a little bit more restrictive. So with that, I'll take any questions anybody has.
Any questions? I'm glad to hear the Unified Development Code is working so well. That took years of work.
Yes. Yeah, I think I was on it for two and a half years. So.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, President Frye, thanks for coming down. I, um, there was a time in 2008, '09, '10 where the planning commission wasn't quite busy, a lot of meetings canceled. And my sense is that that's not the case now. Can you talk maybe just a little bit about the workload?
Yes. I believe that in the last year or so, we've only canceled one or two meetings because we've had a lot on our agenda. There are nights that we have three public hearings. And so it, it has been going. The other night on Airbnb, the public hearing was two and a half hours long. So yes.
Something to look forward to.
Get ready.
Any other questions? Well, thank you again. Thank you really for your service on that, Rich. That's great. Al Wakefield.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good morning.
City Council members. My name is Al Wakefield. I'm the owner of Womack Valley Yellow Cab. I come here tonight to talk to you about the TNCs. And having my own business and starting up my own business, the first thing I realized that you need to have an economic analysis, an environmental study, and a traffic study for what we're proposing. And I haven't seen any of that performed to do this application. Anyhow, also, in my opinion, there should be a limited number of drivers brought into the city of Salem. Because of the traffic situation that we have in the congestion, the city of Portland right now has over 4,500 Uber drivers driving around, sitting at the TNC lot, airport, double parking in town. There's not enough room in Salem for that kind of activity. The drivers are not going to come from in-town, they're going to come from Dallas, they're going to come from Turner, they're going to come from Homesville. They're going to continue to plug up our downtown corridors and create a greater mess traffic-wise than we have now. As we know, Uber's had getting a bad rap, but anyhow, it's their own fault. The commercial insurance liability insurance is in, not equal. The drivers are not insured. I have some papers here from the Ride Share Academy to tell you how to avoid and how to, what you're supposed to say when you have an accident. Tells you, "Oh, don't ever say you're working for Uber." And because what's going to happen? The driver is not insured. He's only going to be covered under his own policy, under the policies that they have. And the most important thing is, as we bring these numbers of people in, how is the city going to control this operation or the numbers of people? You have two public safety people on the city budget. You'll have no control. You'll lose total control of all ride-share or driving transportation products. And lastly, one thing that really comes to point is that as a local company, for every dollar spent on transportation in the city, whether us or Affordable or any local company that's licensed in the city of Salem, 100% of that dollar works in our economy. When you take a ride-share, 40%, approximately 40% of every dollar leaves this economy, our local government, our community, and is handed to a company in San Francisco as income.
Yeah, time's up. But I have, I, I just had a question. Is Yellow Cab a franchise?
Pardon?
Is Yellow Cab a franchise, or do, do Yellow Cab companies open up individually? I mean, do you just open a company, call it Yellow Cab, and it's Yellow Cab, or is it a franchise?
I purchased the company that was Salem Kaiser Yellow Cab and changed the name. And they've been, Yellow Cab has been in business since 1952, as Checker and Yellow Cabin, is providing transport, safe transportation.
Here in town.
For the city of Salem.
Great.
And that's, you know, we're trying to preserve a little bit of heritage here, too, also.
Okay.
And also, another thing on economics, for every $1,000 earned by a TNC applicator, $69 is not paid to support the State Accident Industrial Fund.
Okay.
I mean, we, we pay over $60,000 a year on workers' comp, and I'm proud to say that my drivers are my employees.
Yep. Any other questions?
So I oppose.
Thank you. I caught that one.
Yeah.
But thank you for clarifying that.
You know, honorable mayor.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
You know, you, we mentioned at the coffeehouse that we would be involved in the rules-making. We were not. And I took your word on it.
I thought you were. Eden Ferius? I apologize if I goofed up your name.
It's all right. Eden Ferius Quintrell, Ward One, I believe, 1038 Seventh Street Northwest, Salem. And if I may, counsel and mayor, I'm just going to go ahead and read a statement, but it's a contrast a bit from what we've heard. I am actually here in support of the city of Salem bringing ride-sharing such as Uber and Lyft. So I'm here because I'd like to voice my support for the city of Salem to allow ride-sharing companies to operate within our city boundaries. The most commonly known ride-sharing companies are Uber and Lyft. These ride-sharing companies provide an alternative to taxis and public transportation such as the chariot's bus. These recently introduced companies provide a service in two ways. They employ so-called partners or drivers as independent contractors to provide transportation using their own personal vehicle to anyone who wishes to use this service. On the other end, any customer that has an Uber or Lyft app on their smartphone can request the services with just a click of a button. Transactions are secure as well since everything is done electronically. There is no need to call in a driver as customers can use their app to pick their preferred driver. Customers can even get price quotes ahead of time. The drivers of these ride-sharing companies ensure quality of service because they are rated by each customer during every single ride. Likewise, drivers can also rate their customers or their riders. Any driver with a rating below a minimum threshold will not be allowed to provide transportation to the customers or the riders. With this in mind, you may have figured out that drivers also have to have this ride-sharing app to store and manage their driver history. They are incentivized to provide the utmost quality of service to customers with this raider-driven system. I would also like to talk about the benefits of ride-sharing. Ride-sharing in Salem means that there are more options for transportation available within our city. Multiple websites such as Business Insider and Consumer Reports, of the few that I looked up, actually point as Uber and Lyft being cheaper in many markets than taxis. Uber and Lyft mapping can also possibly show us where there's a higher traffic and demand for drivers, which can actually help city officials determine if additional public transportation is needed in that specific area. Ride-sharing contributes to our local economy as well. A driver earns money by working within our city. That same driver probably already resides within the city or in our area, and that money is most likely spent in the city. The more people ride-sharing employees, the more money drivers can make to in turn spend it right here in Salem. Ride-sharing is also a great way to meet new people.
Eden, I'm, I'm sorry, the time's up.
Okay.
You have three minutes, and it's up. Have you been a driver?
I have not been a driver. I do have the Lyft app, but obviously I can't, I can't use it here in Salem.
Can't use it, yeah. Okay. Great. Well, thank you very much for coming. Were there any questions for, and, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aaron Wallsfield, Wakefield, I'll bet. I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Wakefield. I'm with Ward One at 1487 Highland Avenue. So today, I'm coming to you to talk about, of course, Uber TNCs. I'm not going to be the to beat a dead horse. We all know that we're opposed to it. I just want to talk about, a little bit about what, primarily, we do the same thing as what Uber does. So, we have the free app. It's secure payments. People can use it to order their cab. They don't have to have any cash in their car. The drivers can, or the passengers can track their driver coming to them. They can rate, actually, every single passenger is also rated their drivers. They rate their drivers. So, we also do the same thing as far as, like, basically, you fire an employee if they're not making, if they're not, you know, doing good customer service. So, they are employees, not independent contractors, which technically, in my opinion, I believe that Uber is also an employee. They do the same type of thing. They say you can't provide service. We're not going to give you your paycheck if you continue doing that or whatever it is. So, so part of my job is scheduling for taxi drivers. And like I was telling you guys last time at the last meeting, there is just not a huge need for transportation. I just looked right now on my app on my phone that I look all the time. We have seven drivers out there right now. Three of them are sitting, and the rest are just on calls. One of them's been sitting for 42 minutes, hasn't had anyone request a ride for 42 minutes. That's by calling in or by the app. And so, we have 1,700 users for the app right now, which is pretty good for our little town. We have a lot of people that don't like to use technology, kind of like just our industry that we have. So, anyways, I just wanted to say that there's not, we don't, I schedule based upon need. So, I would put more drivers on the road if there was a, if there was a higher demand. You know, on, like I was saying last time, on a Saturday night, there's three or four drivers sitting at all times just waiting for a call. Regulations like the ones that we're hashing out tonight were put into place historically for a reason. They are put into place by our predecessors for a reason, to protect people. So, lowering our standards and taking out those regulations really doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Because while I agree that we should all be on a level playing field, I think that it should be a strict one. I think that it shouldn't be one where you just send people out and let them be in any car with any person. You have no idea who comes in that car. Anybody could have that phone that day. You could pass it to your friend. You could pass it to your cousin, your brother. There's people on Facebook leasing out their cars because they're too tired, and they just want any other person to take their car, and they'll give them 50% of their pay because maybe that person isn't approved for Uber. So, I see that on Facebook. I'm a member of all of those, like, Facebook groups for Uber, and I read some of the comments and the, and the dialogue that goes on there, and it's actually pretty worrisome. I think that it would be really important.
Time's up.
If you guys looked into that.
Great. Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes.
Thank you. I just have a question. So, you said you have about 1,700 users of the app at any given point. Like, right now, there's, did you say, three, four people waiting?
There's, yeah, there's four people on duty, three people waiting for.
Waiting. Do you have any insight into why people don't use the taxi more? Have you heard, I can tell you from personal experience, I've heard people, either they don't know about the app or that kind of Uber-like way you can call up a taxi. I've also heard from people, they say it's more expensive, and they don't want to pay for it. So, I'm wondering if you have any insight into why maybe we don't have the volume of people using taxis, and also, if you could provide some insight into the charges for Yellow Cab versus Uber or Lyft or similar.
Yeah. Statesman Journal did an article one time where the guy took an Uber when Uber first came into town. They took an Uber from, I think it was from the Statesman Journal building where it used to be, to the Broadway Coffee House, and it was $6.75. And I did the analysis, and it was $6.55. So, I was thinking at the time, like, that's so close. You know what I mean? At that time, our rates were different. Their rates were different. So, I look now, and it depends. Uber changes their prices all the time. So, it really does depend. Our minimum fare is $5, which gets you about a mile. It gets you actually a mile. So, it's $5. Our rates actually are direct result of the fees that we pay for commercial insurance and all of those different things that we have to pay to be operating in town. As far as the app goes, to answer that question, we, every single phone person that calls in hears an advertisement for the app on the phone. So, that's mostly how we get our word of mouth out about the app. We also have stickers in the cars and little cards that we hand out to people. I think that what I find the most about the people that say they won't use the app is they just aren't, they don't have smartphones. We have a huge, sorry, elderly community who don't want smartphones and who don't want to use it. And so, those are the people that, you know, aren't using it and that whatnot. And I find, too, that they say this, the cost, you know. People would rather just take the bus. We get a lot of people using taxis on the weekends when there is no buses.
Sure.
Just one more follow-up. Do you, do you do surge pricing, surge charge?
We don't.
You don't?
No, it's a same price sometimes.
It's just a flat all the time?
Yeah, and we offer, like, you know, on New Year's Eve, we offer free rides home for the public so that everybody can get home for free. You know, we help with the warm-in shelters and all that type of stuff. We do a lot of community outreach to make sure that we're a part of our community.
Great. Okay, any further questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, did you want to, if you'd identify yourself and your ward or address?
Sure, this one's working? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Hey, my name's Sean Nikas. I'm with Ward 7. Hello, everybody.
Did you spell your last name? I just couldn't hear.
Sean Nikas, N-I-K-A-S, Nikas, yeah. Which I recently found out means victorious. My son's in college, and he, let me know. I'm here just to talk a little bit quickly here about Uber and what's going on with it. I think it's important to note that the way things work right now in the insurance industry, the Uber drivers and Lyft drivers can buy the exact same types of insurance policies that Yellow Cab and other companies have. That didn't used to be true. A year ago, that wasn't true, but it is true today. And they can go buy them at places like Geico, just like standard online places. So, I think it's important also that, I'm the, one of the owners of privatize.com. The idea that private companies are somehow a lowering of standards is just, I'm not willing to accept that. Really, when you're doing background checks like this, one, I would ask everyone to please not put too much faith into background checks, because certainly, plenty of people who later on commit crimes pass them. And the things that the police department goes through are really, you know, the same databases and the same things that the private companies are going through. The background checks aren't going to have different results. The legislation, as I see it after reading it, is not lowering any standards. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Sean, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. You said that the background checks that you and private companies do, in your view, are, use the same material or the same database so they are the same as the police departments?
For what the police department will be doing here, unless the police, the police department may be going on actually interviewing people, and that would be taking it to another level.
Okay.
But if what we're doing is looking, has this person committed crimes in the past? Have they been in jail? Yeah, it's going to, the same results. It's not going to be missed either way.
Thanks.
Counselor Lewis.
We've heard from a couple of speakers tonight on this issue that Salem, when it comes to this type of transportation, is really not using it.
Go ahead.
And my question would be from a business, after listening to, listening to the taxi folks who imply there's very little usage, why would, why would a company like Uber or Lyft want to come into a situation like that?
Well, I think there's a very important reason why Uber wants to be here. Uber has a lot of corporate clients. And they, for a, like, say, a salesperson or something like that, and they come here to the state of Oregon just like they go to Sacramento or up to Olympia. You know, same group of salespeople are coming to the state government. They have Uber accounts. And for those individuals to use a taxi cab, they are going to have to use their company credit card. And a company credit card gets reimbursed later, maybe, depending if that reimbursement, you know, reimbursement gets approved. That's the way big corporations work, for those of you who haven't worked inside of them before. So, there's a disincentive for those types of employees to actually use taxi cabs in the modern economy. And I think actually that Uber can actually add to our economy in that way, in that it'll have, those types of employees will feel more free to travel around Salem. Right now, a lot of them are probably actually making the decision to rent a car where they would have used Uber. Because they, taxi cabs have an unearned sometimes reputation of not being that clean, and people don't want to bring their clients into them.
Okay, any other questions? Nope, thank you. Okay, that's, ends the list, too. Do we have other people who would like to speak? Come on up. Tell us your name. What ward do you live in? Got three minutes. The yellow light will come in after two, and after three, the red light comes on, and you're done.
Good evening. My name's Eileen Brown. I live at 2255 Southwest Sturgis Lane in Troutdale. I am an Uber driver and rider since December of 2014. My own experience, how I got involved, was I was stuck on a corner in Portland at 2:30 in the morning with my friends after a night of eating and drinking out, and I couldn't get home. At 4 o'clock in the morning, I finally called my son. Since I became a driver, I've found that I am serving my community, and a community, especially at night, where there's such a great need. We want people to go out and drink and eat and spend money in town. We want them to have fun. We want them to enjoy all our small businesses. We couldn't do that. We had to stay close to home and walk somewhere. We couldn't get a taxi. There's just not enough on those nights when they're really needed. I found as a rider, for myself, I branched out. I went to Portland. I live in Troutdale. It's 16 miles away. For 16 bucks, I could go downtown and have a fun time and get home and save a few dollars and enjoy my community. I, so I drive at night. In the beginning, so many of the people that got in my car, one in, I would say, 20, would make the comment, if it weren't for you guys, we'd push the envelope on drunk driving. We'd drive buzzed, or we wouldn't go. I don't hear that at all today. Almost two years later, I don't ever hear it. The other really striking thing for me is, in the beginning, I noticed some bars and restaurants closing early because it was slow and there was no business. Now, everybody's busy. People are going out from all over the world. I've met people from Turkey to Sacramento. Unbelievable amount of people are traveling when they're here on business. They not only, instead of just going to the restaurant next to the hotel, now they're seeing our whole city. They're going to the theater and movies and whatever. It's really brought so much, not to mention, you make a little extra money. It's helpful to our economy. I spend my money I earn in my community. Ride-sharing as a whole has really improved Portland for our local residents and visitors alike, and I think Salem could really use that. There's the other thing about the taxi thing. Taxi thing, there's a place for everyone. People that use taxis are always going to use taxis. There is a whole population that is never going to call a taxi. I was one of them. I wouldn't do it. It just wasn't for me. It didn't work the episodes I've had before. And I have a lot of riders who only want to use that, but their friends might still be taxi users. They come together. Everybody comes together. There's a place for everyone. We can all work together to help our community here.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, council members. My name's John Isaacs. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for Uber here in Oregon. I represent the company here. I live in southeast Portland, 1347 Southeast 84th Avenue in Portland, Oregon. Also a former Salem resident. I've lived in Oregon since 1976, so I get asked that a lot since I'm with Uber. I'm a local person and only focus on this state. I wanted to just come tonight and express our support for what you're considering. We see it as creating a level playing field that is, meets modern needs. It is based loosely on ordinance that was just adopted unanimously by the city of Bend and the city of Redmond after about eight months of work. So, they spent a lot of time looking at it, asking all the same questions that you're talking about. I did want to address a couple of things. I knew that this would come up, so we did the research before I came tonight. So, currently in Salem, there are over 10,000 active Uber account riders in Salem. So, these are, these are Salem residents who have used the app more than once in the last 90 days. They're not using it here, obviously, but that's either in Portland or when they're traveling in another city that has Uber. There's also over 500 active drivers. So, drivers who have gone through the onboarding process in Portland, you know, they, drivers drive whenever they want to for Uber. So, I don't know, I can, I can tell you that our speculation is they're drivers driving to Portland to earn money on weekends or when they have their own spare time. So, there is an active group of riders here in Salem that will use the service if it's allowed to operate here. A couple of other things, I wanted to just make sure you knew. We facilitated a conversation between your police department and Checker, which is the background check company that Uber uses. They had the conversation independent of us. We didn't participate in it. We just set it up and allowed them to talk. We also provided a sample background check report for the police department, which, I don't know if you saw it, but it's very thorough. We can, we're happy to share it with you as well. Just a couple of other things I wanted to mention. In terms of safety, if you've used the Uber app, it does facial recognition and name, so it's general practice. When you get in the car, you make sure you're in the right car with the license plate. You can see a face of the driver. They'll ask you, are you John? And you'll say, yes. Are you Thomas? And then you know you're in the right car because it's an individual car to an individual rider. And then the last thing is, 80% of all fares go to the driver. So, for every $20 fare that will happen here in Salem, if we're allowed to operate here, 16 of it would stay here with that driver. So, most of the money stays locally. You're talking about local people giving local people rides in your city. It'll add another option to the mix. I think it's right to say people who use taxi now will keep using taxi. We've actually formed partnerships in Portland with two taxi companies who operate on the Uber platform. So, that's something we look forward to doing here as well. I'm happy to answer any questions later if you would like.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Just want to make sure, I believe I heard earlier that the Uber driver is responsible for insurance. Do you require they have insurance?
So, yes, we require that they have, they show proof of their own personal insurance when they go through the background check. But Uber covers the driver from the second they turn the app on to the second that they turn the app off, they're on Uber's insurance. And what you're considering lays out the requirements for that insurance. It actually defines the three periods very well. But from the second that button turns on, even if the driver is sitting in their home just looking to see if, if rides are available before they leave their home, they, Uber's insurance kicks in and is the primary insurance for those drivers.
Counselor Cook.
It's my understanding that Uber was recently appraised at $70 billion with a B dollars. Is that, is that congruent with what you know Uber as a business itself, as far as it's for?
Oh, as far as valuation?
Yeah.
I read about that the same as you.
You don't have a special insider?
No, I don't have any special insight into that. So, I know as much about that as you do.
All right.
Sorry, I took a second to figure out what you were referencing.
You're talking about helping the local economy, bringing money there. That's certainly a big business to sit up and take notice about. And you're coming here to get an agreement with our city. I know you talked about several Salem users already having the app on their phone, it not being legal. I'd like to talk a little bit about grayballing, if that's okay, if that's come up before, I'm assuming. Grayballing, for those of you that don't know, from my understanding, would be when people are encouraged to use the app when an agreement doesn't exist with the city. So, being as the layout within our area and transportation needs outside of the municipality, have you ever pursued agreements with other organizations outside of the municipality? If Salem has this agreement and someone wants to drive to another city or outside of the city limits, where does that agreement stand, start and stop? And if Portland is not continuing with the Uber app and people are wanting to use this to go up to the airport, where does that put, what has Uber listed you in as far as being able to tackle those agreements?
So, I'll try to address it as best I can to my best understanding. So, the way that the app works now is if you reside in the Portland metro area, and, you know, that generally means south to north, southwest Washington to Mount McMinnville, Forest Grove to Sandy, about that sort of.
And all those cities have agreements?
No, just the city of Portland. But the, most of the cities in the Portland metro area just ask that Lyft and Uber get a business license to operate there and then, and then know that we will, that the drivers in their area are, are going to be onboarded under the Portland program, private-for-hire program. I had imagined a similar, it'll be similar here. If Salem adopts this, I assume, I imagine it'll be similar for cities like Kaiser and others. We'd have to talk to them first and would not turn the app on in any city that didn't allow it. But if you can get a ride in Salem to, you can get a ride in Portland now, take it to Salem, you just can't, that driver cannot get a rider back. So, they would have to drive here and then be willing to turn around and So they would have to drive here and then be willing to turn around and go all the way back to Portland if they wanted to take that fare. So I'm trying to respond to what you were asking about. If Salem were to adopt the new code and Uber and Lyft were to operate here, riders would be able to get rides within the city limits, potentially more depending on what cities would allow us to operate and would be able to get a ride to anywhere. The question would be, could they get, could that driver get a ride back? So a rider from Salem to Portland right now could then get a ride there, potentially drive them back to Salem.
Okay, and if I may, just a couple. So as you'd heard in the previous testimony regarding houselessness and the city's efforts to bring affordable housing and tackle chronic issues of homelessness, we have a large population within Salem that experienced domestic violence, stress issues, substance abuse, mental health problems. And I noticed on the increased background checks, we do pay special recognition to sex offenders. And I'm not moving towards that criminalization aspect, but asking questions for things such as speeding, traffic violations, minor traffic violations. Are these things that are all registered within your organization? If someone is getting chronic speeding, chronic parking tickets, it's not a major offense? I don't know if I would be especially able to not want to ride in a car with them, but how would we track that, is that data that's available?
Yeah, so the code, so two questions there. So the code that you are considering allows the city to audit Uber twice a year. It also requires us to turn over any individual record at any time if there's an investigation by, say, the police department, if there's a complaint, and we're okay with that. We also, in our own background check policy, do, driver is removed from the platform if they get three traffic violations within a year. And then the background check is run every year. The code you're considering that's before you would require annual background checks. So say a driver passes a background check during that year, they get three speeding tickets, we don't know about it, the next year's background check would catch that and they would not be allowed to continue to drive for Uber on the platform.
Okay.
Sorry.
So you had mentioned the revenue and the data that you collect. Is that something that is pushed out to our city and our city staff? Do we maintain ownership of that? Do you share that with us freely, or is it just the twice a year with the audit for what we're looking for?
We would have a, we'll need to negotiate a nondisclosure agreement. We've also, for any data, because we are a private company and we consider it to be proprietary, so we work out arrangements in cities where we can privately share data in order to ensure the safety of the public. The other thing is, we've launched a platform called Uber Movement that aggregates transportation data in order to help cities plan without turning over the privacy of account users and drivers to cities. So that's another thing that we look forward to using here if possible.
So it sounds like from what you're saying, if Uber did enter into this agreement, if the City of Salem entered into this agreement with Uber, you would want it to be the sole ride-sharing platform in this community, not for Lyft, just strictly Uber?
Nope.
Or you would agree to other platform uses or other platforms, similar sharing community-type platforms?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, this would apply to all transportation network companies. It would just be a matter of, the data we're required to share with the city, we want to make sure stays confidential. That's all.
Okay. Want to ask more?
This would be more of a question for staff, and I see Christian's not here tonight. But I was wondering about our technology staff, and since the sharing community, whether it's with Airbnb, as Planning Commission talked about, with Uber, with Lyft, this is coming up more and more frequently. And as you said, this is your proprietary measure. I would be interested to see technologies take on an in-house and what we'd be able to do with that.
And the motion tonight is not to pass this. I mean, I hope you all understand that. This is courtesy virtually to take it to public hearing.
Sure.
That's all we'd be doing, and we would make sure that anyone you want here is here.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, that's a really interesting idea to have IT here. Yeah. So that's the concept tonight, and I think it'll be noted by the city manager that if you decide you'd like to move forward, we would make sure IT is here and anyone else you want here. This really isn't a public hearing at this point. This is just a chance to know we'd like to start advancing this, get it through the Who'd I move? Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Isaac. Nice talking to you. Actually, as you and your attorney were driving back to the Portland airport after meeting with city staff, because I had some questions on background checks and what have you. But in the, your response to Counselor Cook, the driver gets three citations, he's removed. For how long?
They're removed for at least a year because they would need to pass another background check. So that's Uber policy. It's posted on our website.
Okay. And then Checker, your background, five years, seven years, 10 years, do they charge you more for how long into history you go back and look at someone?
I don't know about the cost, but what they look at is what we ask them to look at, and that's defined by what, you know, the municipality in which the background checks run requires, right?
So you're not hardlocked onto a seven-year versus a 10-year?
Seven-year is consistent with most cities. That would be consistent with the city of Portland and its Uber policy as well. So it's a seven, yeah, seven years is the look back.
Okay. Thanks.
And it's a hard yes-no. There's no gray area, so you either pass it or you don't pass it.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see that there is some move, oh, thanks for coming down, too. How'd you get here? By your own car or by Uber driver?
Probably my own car, yes.
You're not getting mad, what?
Yeah.
Not in here, you didn't.
I note where there is some movement afoot in the legislature, and I'm not sure where that is, to pass some sort of state rules and regulations. What's your view on that?
So my view on it is that's where things have gone. So at this point, 40 states, Wyoming just became the 40th state to adopt statewide ride sharing. The, I don't know what our prospects are in the capital. You know, our philosophy is we want to partner with anyone who's interested in ensuring that ride sharing's a service that their residents can access, so we'll work at any level. I can tell you that what you're considering is almost identical to what the legislature's considering. So, you know, let's say you decided, yes, we're ready to do this here in Salem, and then three months later, the legislature were to pass a statewide law. There's almost no material difference in the policy between what you're considering and they're considering.
Then, I'm not sure if you answered Counselor Cook's question about gray balling. Maybe you did, and I didn't quite get it. But as I understand it, Portland is upset right now because even during the agreement there was, that was passed in 2015, there was still some gray balling going on, and if the Walamette Week is correct, just five or six days ago, somebody from Uber issued a statement, we're going to tell our drivers not to use it, so, to grayball. And so I'm wondering if you could also say you're not going to be using gray balling here. And as I understand it, gray balling means there's some way you can tell if somebody is a city regulator who's trying to.
Or a police officer.
Yeah, or a police officer is trying to get on, get a ride.
So I personally know as much about gray balling as anyone here in the room, just so we're clear. And I can't, because there's an inquiry in Portland, I can't.
I'd be happy to talk with you about it.
Yeah. I cannot, I just can't comment on it. There's an inquiry that Portland's doing. I can tell you, the company issued a statement last week saying that this technology will no longer be used, and they put controls in place. As Uber was growing as a very localized company, and they put controls in place that it cannot be used in the ways it was used, may have been used, to avoid regulators or inspectors. And so that, the company made that statement last week.
I'm sorry, I understand it's not a public hearing, but just one small question here, maybe a large answer, though. What's your position on surge pricing versus consistent pricing all the way through?
So surge pricing or dynamic prices, it's what ensures that there's a balanced marketplace so that if you have an unbalance where you have tons of demand from the rider side but very few drivers out there, it is a signal to the drivers that there's demand. So when surge goes up by a lot, it usually is by, for a very short period of time, and then the driver supply balances out and you have, you have a balanced marketplace. Riders get an upfront price now. So you hail a ride, it tells you what the whole fare is going to be, and it's up to you whether you want to choose it or not. Riders know now that if they look at a price and it says, oh, that looks a little high, wait a few minutes and it will come down. I can tell you that surge, we worked with the city during snowpocalypse in Portland recently to, when it spiked on that, to moderate it, but also to allow it to do its job to keep drivers on the road. And we were able to keep during those nine days about 1,000 Uber drivers consistently on the road. And I can tell you unequivocally, we helped keep Portland moving around, our drivers did. And partly that was due to having dynamic pricing where drivers knew that they were going to make a little more money if they were out there, and it was up to riders to decide whether they wanted to pay those fares. They weren't much higher than what normal fares would have, were.
Okay. Any further questions? Any, is there anyone else who wanted to testify? Okay, very good. Well, we're beyond public comment now. We're on our way. Consent calendar. Move what?
That was public comment.
That was just public comment. It's not a public hearing. It's just a, these are people just moved by consent.
Mr. Mayor, I move the approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Do you want to go over that real quickly?
Okay, let's play track and speed her back up.
Yeah, just get her moving.
So we've got the February 27 council minutes, and we've got legislative priority bills. It's a report from the Legislative Committee on the position on bills that affect the city of Salem. And that's it.
You can post a no on something if it caught your attention, if you'd like.
No, it'd be fine.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, no resolutions, action item, oh, that's the, sorry, no public hearings, special orders of business. A sec here, I'll give you a. So we'll go 5A. I move the council move consideration of amendments to SRC Chapter 30, modifying license requirements for the transportation network company and their drivers to first reading and a public hearing.
Second.
Second by McCoyd. You've heard, you've heard a smattering of public discussion. I think, recall you've got, as was mentioned, I think it's something like 10,000 users, several hundred drivers. I think there is a tremendous amount of interest in Salem on both sides. And I would like to hear from, other than the directly interested parties. I'm hoping that the public hearing will draw in members of the public and others to discuss this issue. This, a vote for this does not mean you're for or against Uber or Yellow Cab or anyone else. This is to just get this into a public hearing so we can have a discussion to get IT here. I think we need to be sure we include the police department. I mean, there's a lot of players in this. And all this is now is to get this moving down the road, so I'd ask for your approval. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just knowing how this always works, you tend to have a public hearing when you're trying to have a public hearing. It's like, I have three public hearings trying to have one public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's hard to understand these, and I think the language in the staff report might have led to the conclusion, that is absolutely the final ordinance, that we're just going to move it on out tonight, and that is in no way my intention. I really would like to have the public hearing. I think this is an outstanding ordinance that passed in the City of Bend and in Redmond. I like it because it levels the playing field, which was one of the things that, when this was discussed and you allowed me to go ahead and get this drafted, that was agreed to. And I do apologize for the lack of consultation. My fault.
And if I could just finish off on that, it's like, yeah, because I may have some questions, concerns, and I'd like to pull those up for a public hearing as well and possibly request a couple other pieces of information in between now and whenever that may be.
And I'm sure you can talk to the manager and make sure any staff folks you need.
What kind of timeline are we on?
Not a big one. No big rush.
And from a staff perspective, it would really depend upon the questions and the amount of dialogue counsel would like staff to have. We were taking a two-pronged approach. The direction was to bring a draft that would allow transportation network companies to operate in Salem and to check with the taxi company. We did provide a draft to the taxi company. Now, if there is a desire to have more robust discussion prior to your consideration, we can certainly do that. And then if there are other pieces of information that you would like prior to the public hearing, such as additional information from the police chief or from our information technology staff or other staff, we can certainly do that. So it would really depend, the length of time would depend upon your questions and your direction to us, to staff.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I, too, have some questions about the ordinance, you know, proposal that we're looking at, but I'm certainly in favor of moving this ahead for a public hearing so we can talk about it. And I will share my questions with staff before they come back with something, but I also would be interested in hearing from Chief Moore and the police department about this whole issue of background checks and how you do it and how other companies do it and what, you know, what that difference is.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Cook.
I'd like to hear from budget, if at all possible, or finance, not the committee, but the department. Kelly is who I'm thinking, and how this would affect the city's budget as far as.
Casey can help you right now.
Good, okay. So my question, Casey, if we're to assume a certain amount of gray balling happened before we had regulations in place, what would be our protocol in charging an upfront fee to essentially make up for the fact that people may have been operating within the community already using this service?
I can't speculate on that, not knowing. What I do know is that Uber had previously operated in Salem and were imposed a fine for that violation, which they did settle and pay.
How much was the fine?
I don't recall the figure. Do you recall, city attorney?
No, Brady Rogers.
Oh, Brady.
Brady Nos. Yay!
And while Brady's coming up, if I may suggest, if counselors have questions, perhaps send the questions to Casey or I, and we'll get the appropriate staff to answer.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. My name's Brady Rogers. I'm your Neighborhood Enhancement Division Administrator. It was years ago, but I issued a total of $98,000 in fines to Uber, and I think they ended up paying about three-quarters of that in a agreement.
So it's a budget enhancer, Brady? Is that your, is that your testimony?
We've got some backlog. There we go.
Counselor Lewis, did you have your hand?
Yeah, I just, I had a question, Brady. I know you've played the role of snitch for a while.
Hey.
And I wonder if you were ever, had the sense that you were, and I think the term is grayballed, whether you were not provided a ride because of who you were.
No, I've taken 16, 18 Uber rides when Uber was operating in Salem and was picked up each and every time. My app appears to be running correctly, but it always occurred to us, and we always joked that they should know that my cell phone spends about 40 or 50 hours a week inside this building, so.
Did, excuse me, did you wear a fake mustache?
No.
No disguise.
Nothing like that.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to information reports.
They were very important.
Administrative purchases, and our annual planning commission report. Was there any further questions on the annual planning commission report that you wanted? Okay, we have no ordinances, first readings, second readings. We do have public comment available for items not on the agenda. Then, without objection, we are adjourned.
Oh, I objected. You already closed it.